Uh.
Scare us now.
Okay.
Perfect.
Ian Lane tonight.
Excellent. We're up and running. All right. To uh welcome everyone, the planning and zoning commission. That's the thing, we're July twenty third, twenty twenty four, we're starting meeting with public relations. On the land.
Goodbye. Nice to see you.
So.
One nation, one God, individual.
So you can talk this role. Uh we'll start with introductions. Drive, sir.
Oh, sorry, Diane Ryan, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Nah, Mike is last, Commissioner, sorry.
Sleeping.
All channeling chair.
The county alternate.
Screw legal commissioner. Joining us online.
Fisher.
And staff with us this evening?
Uh Beth McAgno, Planning Director, Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Excellent, and I'd just like to remind everyone that anyone using their personal cell phone or not communicating with each other, they are using it to reference the Google Drive. We play available. Uh we were going to start by jumping right into our continued public hearing for ECB Realty LLC, twenty two Stony Hill Road. Best thing.
Okay, now, I would say to the uh first two items. Um. Uh I Amanda, I'm looking up the date again.
Um August thirteenth.
Uh the engineers are still, the easiest way to explain this is the engineers are still going back and forth with the plans and some of the design principles that are being used. And um until the final revised plans are done and everybody's in agreement, um we're taking it off the table till the August thirteenth meeting, so you'll have a complete package and a final package to review before gets completed.
That is ECB Realty LLC for twenty two Stony Hill Road Site Plan Special Permit is being continued to our meeting at August thirteenth. Uh and then NILRA Realty Corp, uh one sixty five Grassley Plain Street Site Plan Special Permit is also being continued to our August thirteenth leaving. Uh from there, we'll move right into our business.
Can we public say something, though?
We're not gonna take any testimony for these.
Oh, it's a public hearing, so no, you can't say anything until the public hearing. Got it, okay, you know what I mean?
August thirteenth.
Right. It's not being continued, got to August thirteen.
Not being closed.
Right.
This is continuing.
Got it, okay, thank you.
They will be back here, we will be here, we'll open it all up like normal.
No problem.
We're just kind of pumped, we're just gonna punt it for a few weeks. Uh we're gonna move right into the business meeting, uh has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes?
Uh wait, did he get that?
There was uh before we do that, so I noticed there was an issue, the motion.
You're saying Mr. Charlie?
Yes.
Um did you see your people for tonight?
I'll give you the version you want to see.
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, uh I will see Doug Thuney for the business meeting. And Parsons.
This one?
Oh, that's good.
Um on the minutes, the uh results of the vote for the Putnam Park application were not listed on the minutes. Um I have in front of me amended minutes. Well, I'll make a motion to accept the amended minutes, showing motion passed six to one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh abstain.
Any opposed? Both abstains. Excellent.
Um then there was another part too, right?
Uh that was the only one I was, I thought.
They didn't have the vote initially on the.
That's what we just added in.
For both?
Which ones? Uh Diane?
This first one, we have this, and then you added this to wherever it is, here. That was in. Cause it wasn't in the, oh, that's the August first.
Oh, that was the um date. Is, okay, if you go down under um eighteen Stony Hill Road, Amanda?
Mm hmm.
Where it says reasons? Where it's bold?
Yes, yes.
Did that add it also to the minutes?
Yeah, that's a nice.
Okay.
That was, that was, that was in there to begin with.
That was in there to begin with, it was just bolded in the minutes.
I thought it was just, I thought it was just that.
So that was.
Oh, this other vote thing, oh, okay.
That was bolded in the minutes to begin with.
Okay.
Right? You got your copy of the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Goodness, France?
Um for the uh the police commission part, oh, that's, that's this, this part here, August one, or is that something different? Now, that was uh.
It was only page four.
Okay, I'm looking at page five, cause I don't think we have any votes there, do we? Or? One forty Greenwood Avenue? Yeah, it's at the bottom. Motion passed unanimously. But we had two different votes, one was about the police commission recommendation. Forty Greenwood? The commission declined the police commission's recommendations, but I, I voted no on that, that I didn't want to decline it. So that wasn't unanimous, but we didn't have a vote there? That wasn't real, I don't, I don't remember that.
That was a consensus.
Yes, I don't remember that being a motion. Okay. I guess it wasn't, maybe.
I don't think it was a motion.
Okay.
I've, I'm.
I could go back and listen to it tomorrow.
Sure.
Okay.
How is it? Yeah, that's fine.
None, the only other thing was under planners report forty two Plumtree Road, um you have on here uh once renovations are completed, the building will look the same as it did before it was demolished, but there's an exception because they're not gonna have the side porch, it's gonna be a garage, I don't know if that needs to be specified or not.
I um I would say no, only because that was specified during the original approval. The garage, the porch was removed when you made the decision to approve um Plumtree's route, you, that before already.
Before we were.
Before it even got to the point of being acknowledged.
Okay.
That was part of the approval.
Okay, but that, okay.
No.
That's the only issues I got.
All right, we'll move on to invoices, do we have any?
No.
No, many voices.
Maybe more than anybody, Hank.
Uh work, we're into our work session, Christina Animal Health LLC, twenty five A Kirkland Road, site plan and special permit, I believe Beth, you have something for us on that?
Yeah, again, dealing with this, um as you gotta understand, I certainly would put something in your agenda, so I knew that none of this was gonna happen this evening, but as of five o'clock tonight, the plans are not completed. So we're gonna be disabling that until August thirteenth comes up.
So the uh Christina Animal Health LLC, twenty five A Kirkland Road Site Plan Special Permit is continues to August thirteenth. Um correspondence, East Station Place LLC, sixty one South Street, extension of time to commence site plan and special permit.
Um this was a previously approved site plan and usually requirement is that they begin construction with um a twelve month period. Um there's no work that has been completed on the site and um they're requesting a twelve month extension to October second, twenty twenty five. And they are citing economic conditions, including interest rates um as one of the reasons why they have not um extended, and has not, have not started construction on the site.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do, to extend to October second, twenty twenty five, sixty one South Street for site plan.
Let's make a motion to extend uh uh East Station Place LLC, sixty one South Street uh to October second, twenty twenty five, start date?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The extensions? Motion passes. Uh and that was a, move on to the planner's report?
Okay, um as far as my report tonight, I was expecting someone else to be present here. I'll start with uh forty eight Stony Hill Road, forty eight Stony Hill Road is that apartment complex located in front of Copper Square. It also includes, I believe it's approximately now nine thousand square feet of commercial along the front of Route six with some apartments on the, on the top. The question posed by the property owners is that they would like to take one of those retail units, or at least one of those retail units to provide for storage area for their tenants. First of all, in the Route six zone, I would tell you that Route uh public storage facilities does not allow use. I've been, I've barked it with those questions all the time by railers. This is, the proposal is for private storage for the tenants of the facility. Um and if the commission were to agree with that type of use, it would require a text amendment to the zoning regulations. But and and if I am sitting here interpreting the regulations as they stand today, it is not allow, an allowable use.
What's the size of the tenant space they, that?
I mean, for the store?
Retail, yeah.
Oh, it, it, well, I, I think it's about nine thousand square feet, I didn't call the trimes, I'm sorry.
No, that's.
No, I mean, no, it's two buildings, remember?
No, I understand.
There's six or nine, um it's two buildings with retail space on the first floor.
Are you familiar with the plans?
No, I am very familiar, I'm familiar with the plans, um I didn't, are, are they talking about taking one of the first floors on the entire thing, or is it like one unit? Like if there's gonna be divided up by five units, that's what they only say.
I didn't get that part.
Okay.
Beth, this is, this is the developer from New Jersey.
No.
No, this is the property where the old Dragon Range was, up closer to the lake.
Where the old restaurant was itself.
So it been built, but wasn't he in front of this commission?
No.
Different property, different property.
Different.
I was aware, then, is that the one, that's the affordable?
Can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
It's the one that was approved with the.
Forty eight Stony Hill Road?
Yeah, sure. Right across the street, it's almost across the street from Stony Hill.
Yeah, the key word, yeah.
Firehouse.
No, it's not upstairs. I, I'll have to go get a full plan.
The project pizza.
Let me go get a plan, it'll just take me a minute.
I'll go, I'll go get it, where is it?
The project has apartment buildings in the back, and in the front, along the road, it was to be.
I'll get it and we can go over.
Uh.
It's gonna be an MLB. Medical hospital.
No, 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 different project, up the road more, up the road.
Okay.
So the, the one up closer to Big Y.
It's a.
It's already almost built.
It's a cross from.
One of them is already filled, like being filled up and rented, the big, the big four story building being rented already, and they're building the second one right now. Beth's bringing it.
It's across from the exception.
Yes.
Property.
When we approved that, it was, there was two buildings along the front of the road that was gonna be commercial along the bottom with a floor or two, I hear.
Three more stories.
Of uh, it was, it was only either two or three floors against the, against the road.
I thought they were all, I thought.
The only one that's four stories is the one that's currently built, the big L.
I thought they were all four stories.
And uh it was supposed to be like little shops, we were, we were envisioning um like barber shop or deli or something to kind of serve the people that are gonna be living there.
Retail.
Retail, exactly. Um and from my understanding is they wanna eliminate some of that retail and put in storage for the, for the uh tenants.
That's a few people were on here, weren't.
Go ahead, Mr. Legard.
Oh, I have, I have a comment on this.
Go ahead.
I would be opposed to that, I would, I would try to keep.
So.
Also comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Legard.
I would be opposed to that uh for the same reason, whether it's private storage or rental storage space, I don't think it belongs in that complex.
Right, right.
I, I agree with you.
Okay, just to orient you and the public. So this is the, the largest building that's been built and a lot of it's been CO, this is what they're building now. The front is two proposed buildings, the first floor, the rule is the first floor has to be commercial use. Proposal is for four units. Just seeing if.
How many floors?
Uh, uh, three floors, I believe.
I thought there were four as well.
No, no, this is the only one.
This is the only one that was four stories.
Oh, just that one's four?
Yep.
I can go to the, this is building A and E, if I go to the front of the site plan, it's gonna tell me how many floors and how many units sitting there. Just say, anyone?
No.
Oh, no, this is just a lot of reason. Yeah. See, this is my site plan, and I'll just use the site itself, I don't.
Those ones said the numbers for residential units, this just said before.
There is residential above it.
Mm hmm. Uh so presumably, they could tell, they didn't tell you how much, what a tenant could be considered the whole thing, or except of one of the four units that he's saying?
I would say one of the four units or two of the four units, it's not a whole, the is not looking at the entire building of the first floor being used. As you can see, it's um, they have the square footage on here, I can't read upside down.
Too little.
But it's not, there's four retail units, and obviously you know how that works, it can be one or two retail units.
And then I presumably he'd run them to his tenants that are already renting from him, he's not gonna give it to them. I, I'm with Mr. Legard, I, I think I would. It just gets a little too gray there about renting and storage and everything else, and I, I think you've been steadfast, the town has um no storage in that area. Plenty of other spaces, the surrounding towns and other parts of Buffalo, so I would probably say no.
Or also, you have two other buildings that you're building, right? So if there's a need for storage for some of your tenants, then why not eliminate some of the units?
Yeah.
Or put the storage within the bill kit?
I think the storage changes the character, what, what was the intention of building with retail?
Let's see, it touches on what that.
It changes the whole.
And it should have been planned in there in the first place, if they needed storage for their people, you know?
Well, it's a nice amenity to have when you're renting in a park.
Yeah.
I mean, the grant has it, you know, the grant has little storage closets or, oh, I've, I've seen them in the units down here for bikes and, you know, people pay a little extra for, for a closet down along the first floor or something like that. But I, I expected he was gonna be here, but he isn't, but I, I did wanna bring that up to you to give them clear direction, because those buildings will be built very shortly.
Is there something else?
Paul, I have something else.
Go ahead, floor is yours.
We, we keep cutting back the retail on that project from what it was originally to what it is now. And I don't think we ought to cut it back any further. I, I think they have to solve their storage problem some other way.
I agree.
So do you need a consensus?
I, I agree with you, I.
Census is all I need.
Oh, that. I, I'd be part of a consensus not to do it.
Thing with consensus is clear that eliminating commercial space, but storage uh is a nonstarter for all of us. Um well, I'll put it, I'll put it to you guys, though, uh the idea that Beth had about removing some of the rental units to put some storage in what building is this building, uh the back left one?
Or I speak to them, I'll make that.
I had, they had numbers at one point. The building B, supposedly it would be twenty four units, three stories high. If they were to eliminate X amount of units to put in their storage areas, would that be something we would entertain as a board or?
I, I think it goes to what Mr. Legard just said, is, is taking away the retail, so yeah, I think that would be all right, I mean, if, if economically it worked for him, it's, that's, that's approve his units, he's taking away one of his residential units or a few of them, but being step past on keeping that village, that village feel kind of upfront with the retail, I think is important.
Yeah, it's private residential locker storage within the building which you reside.
Yeah.
If residential building, I'm just speaking out loud.
Yeah.
Do they have basements that they can put this?
No, it's all unslapped.
Oh.
But the prerequisite of doing anything is to have a commercial component in the front of the property.
Yeah.
Open to the public.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was kind of the intent.
Thank you. That's what.
That was how they got the rest in, by having the commercial?
Correct.
Um let's take a consensus on the idea of putting them uh some storage in one of the buildings in lieu of apartments?
What, before we say that, do you think it's gonna affect the number of affordable units, because if there's less, then they have to have a less affordable, right?
Everything would work in thirty percent. So if they removed three units, then you would lose one affordable. But they'd also lose two rate paying.
Are we willing to do that?
I don't see that the storage is gonna go into any of these.
They would have to do it, you think they won't do it, cause they're gonna lose money.
They, they get more money from rental units than from storage.
Yeah. The rental rates.
I, I agree with the option, I, I'll.
I'll, I'll learn to have a discussion with them and see what they wanna do. I think you made it very clear how you feel, and if they wanted to make some changes, thought they'll come back.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Clear, that's very good, thank you.
We'll move on to uh mission comments.
No, I still have a few more things to talk about, I'm sorry, guys, I just wanted to, you know, there's a lot of stuff in the papers lately about goats in New Fairfield and chickens in Denver and, and things like that, and I would tell you that in Bethel, um with the zoning enforcement part of it, the biggest, as far as chickens are concerned, since we changed our regulations, there really has been very minimal um complaints about chickens, the complaints have been about roosters. And it's great having the regulation changed, cause what you did was you changed it, say, no roosters. So there's a lot of rooster soup going around, and you know, but seriously, there's still a lot of rooster complaints, people are, you know, and we get on it, and we find the roosters and so on and so forth. Been doing a lot with um zoning enforcement over the last two weeks, very, very heavily involved with that at this point. Um dealing with the contractors and residential zones, I'm looking at Amanda because Amanda starts with the calls, things like that. Um it's one of the heaviest summers I've ever seen where we're dealing with a lot of enforcement issues. And like. So if you call me and I don't get back to you right away, that's what's going on.
Good.
With David and Fred, they're very good people and we're just working. Doing more than normal with the enforcement, so it's, you know, one day you're dealing with, for today, for example, there was a walk through Durasell. Um a hundred thousand square foot building that's gonna be available and stuff, and then the next minute I'm dealing with roosters, trying to figure out what roosters are, or going around the corner, you know, you can't make it out, but that's part of the plot.
It's variety.
It's always change.
Yes, variety.
It's always changing, always changing. Um a few other things we're working on, I'm working on is the, I'm trying to put together a, Paul and I talked about the TOD and um doing something, maybe the first meeting in September. Uh should get together, all of you guys, you put your heads together and decide, kind of come to a conclusion of what you wanna do, if you wanna tweak it, or you want to delve into it with a, another planner, and then go from there. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Plumtree's, the rewrite for, where we had the situation. Bear with me.
The structural engineer?
Hmm, yeah, for the foundation.
Yep.
Um you said that that was getting close.
The structural engineer, there are two other projects that will probably be coming in the late fall. And even though the regulation isn't in place, they are gonna be using our structural engineer, the um gentleman that we have talked to about doing this and having them do a structural engineering uh report on the house, one of them is on twenty two Nashville Road. One that we changed village to, yep, and they know that they cannot walk in the door without a structural engineer report.
Especially for the foundation, now, but we, we discussed if, and if I'm wrong, you'll correct me, as usual, we had discussed that there was a need to change wording in the code, so this didn't happen again.
Yes, and that's, that, what that will do be is the structural engineer language that we're gonna put in there. But for the meantime, until that language is put in there, we have Eric um had recommended a structural engineer for us to use. And so we are using him, and, and I'm telling people, if they're coming in and they wanna do any type of work, and there's an existing um house on the property, that our structural engineer has to be allowed to go in and review it, do a report for the commission, but the applicant is responsible for paying for it.
Okay.
That's how we're gonna make it right now. Because there are other regulations that are gonna be coming that we wanna get done, and, and especially with the TOD, if there's some changes you wanna make with that.
And then the last one is uh. Do we know when the traffic study?
You know? No. I haven't heard anything about that. I know about bus stops and bus covers, I can deal with that, um you know, the, the.
The shelters.
The shelters, things like that, sidewalks. Chickens? Um I know what's, I know down Rooster Street it's almost done, the sidewalk. After four years.
And it's changing sides evidently.
It has to because of um the refusal of property owners to give the right capacity, that's reasons. That's my position on it.
Yeah, those were my questions, Beth.
You're late.
Oh. Socrates.
Okay, so this is Bob Gleason. Bob Gleason is one of the owners of upstream properties up on forty eight Stony Hill Road. Um.
Mr. Gleason, you missed our conversation.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't think you would have liked it very much. Just to put it honestly.
I've, I appreciate that, can I speak a little bit, or in a most manner?
Um you, you've made it under the, the snick of time, so.
Okay.
Make a motion to.
To what?
Add any, and now?
Uh well, that was part of the planner's report, which we're still working on. Um so, I don't think so. Thanks if Mr. Gleason would like the floor, I'll give him a hundred minutes.
Sure.
Away. Where should I start? Well, Beth kinda gave us the rundown a little bit.
Basically, I'll, I'll tell you what I said to them.
Yep.
I told them that um you wish to use some of the retail space in the front.
Correct.
To provide um storage area for your tenants.
Yes.
Um storage, you know, rent storage, I didn't know how many units, I, I assumed it wasn't a whole building or something like that, but it would be private storage. I also explained to them it's not the regs.
Right.
Can't do storage out in the Route six areas, Route six area, so it would have to be a text.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
So why I'm here is we have two buildings, you know, approximately four thousand square feet of retail commercial space on the first floor. The apartments, we have the seven unit buildings built, forty four rented, we have the response been great. And a lot of our tenants have asked, do you have garages, do you have any place to store bikes, things like that? When we built the Grand One on Grand Street, in that building, we had ten, you know, closets, storage closets.
I told them that too.
Okay, that's a big, I'm so, I said, wow, and, and they have been full with a waiting list since we built that building. So I looked at the area and we've had literally no, you know, request for any retail space there. I'll go to the Big Y, there's eight thousand square feet of open space that's been there for, you know, five, six, seven years. Talked to the guy who owns the running store, would he move, not, I'm here. So I just think I'm gonna build these buildings that have this empty space here. And what would be the highest and best use to serve the people that are gonna be living there, why don't we do this? So um that's basically, I, I was gonna put a gym for the, for the tenants, you know, and a little bit of it, like a nineteen by twenty gym, and then the rest would be about fifty storage lockers, basically. And if I use the same ratios of ten units for twenty, ten storage lockers for twenty six units in the Grand One, that's about the right number. I'm sure I'd have, have more demand, there'd be no signage, it wouldn't be a commercial self-storage unit. Uh the way I look at it is, you know, you had garages, it's a smaller garage attendance with, with, with rest. And that's basically it, I'm just looking for a solution, and this is the one that. And this is the one that, you know, it seems like the the easiest one at this time. You have any questions?
I'll look forward. You guys have any questions?
No questions, thanks.
No.
Okay.
Did we get where you're at here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Just trying to. The conversation we had earlier was we prioritized the and um Mike said it perfect, the village feel. Keeping some shops down below.
Yeah.
And I remember when we um when this was first coming in.
Yeah.
Um, we were talking about like uh, you know, deli or barber shop and just having services there, shops. Open to the public and to service everyone that lives there.
Yeah.
Um, I feel strongly that that should still be the way it goes.
I would, if that was the reality of the the demand, I love that. You know, I I think that's great. And I should point out that it's still gonna look like a village store. And this is not written in stone. That it would stay that way. I mean, I, you know, I I uh, I'm just thinking, well, what what can we do? I mean, you drive up with the big Y, it says it all. There's more vacant retail space there than there is here.
Yeah.
And that that's that's bad. Now, I I don't want to go and poach Pete's Deli from across the street, you know, I don't want to do that. I. I don't want to poach people from, you know, the center next door. That's not my goal. I want to be a good neighbor to these folks. And and I've had it some reason, like, you know, but what, why would I do that? Why would I hurt the neighbor next door? That's not real. By and large, you know. Yeah, but and that's, um, you know, that's what I was going.
So I, what's your schedule for building, building A?
So uh, this building here is built and.
Yeah, that one's on the.
Yeah, this will be ready in December. This building, we're gonna start framing, uh, digging probably in two weeks. I'll be ready like March. And these will be ready by the summer of next year. So the whole project will be done by the, you know.
This time next year.
Yeah, this time next year.
Well, one thing we did discuss as a board. That we would entertain, like if for instance, this building, if you wanted to eliminate X amount of units and put storage there, like in the building.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the, it's it's not the storage idea that's scaring us off. It's it's eliminating those shops.
Yeah. In the front.
I think the retail landscape has changed a whole hell of a lot since this was proposed to us, right? We warmed up for the idea of.
Yeah.
This is what we want to see shops in this this environment.
Oh, I, as I said, if it could be Stars Hollow, Gilmore Girls and 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 hot chocolate, I would love that.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's just not the case. And I did say that at the time, I'm very worried about renting the retail spaces based on the retail climate in the world right now. So as we get further into the project, the number one request I'm getting for that space is from the tenants. Where can we source?
But also i- in in my um opinion.
Yeah.
You're gonna add a hundred and twenty some odd units here, right?
Hundred thirty-seven.
Hundred thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Uh, you might have more of a someone that wants to move in here saying, hey, I got a hundred and thirty-seven apartments right behind my. My coffee shop that I'm gonna have a line out the door every day.
Is that?
I mean, the proof is in the pudding across the street, Cafe Duo.
Yeah.
They're doing very well there. Um, and uh, I think they had the same concerns with that building.
Well, my.
Yeah, they did very much so.
They had the same concerns.
Yeah.
And I think that's all, that's, pardon me if I'm wrong, that's fully rented.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of people that walk back and forth on that sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a great location. I I don't dispute it in any way, shape or form. And I would love it if if I could fill it that way. I guess maybe we can leave it this way. It, you hear me now. I may be back here in a year saying it's empty. When you reconsider and keep an open mind. I I mean, I get where you're coming from and I, you know, I I got it. But I'm just reporting what I'm hearing there now. And I want to keep the conversation going, you know, that, is that fair?
That's fair.
I think that's fair. I think you have to, the reason I asked about your construct.
Oh. Go ahead, Mr. Ignard, before yours.
I I, again, I think we could keep the conversation going, but I I think we've squeezed it down as low as we can on the retail space. Uh, as this project has. Processed our way through the 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 system here. And I think we ought to keep it, keep the retail space as is. If some somewhere in the future could be proved to us that it it could go the other way, let's wait and see. But somewhere down the road, I would keep it retail right now.
So totally fair. It's it, you know, it's it's a big open space, you know, so. We'll we'll just play it as it goes. I mean, but I just wanted to share where we are now and uh.
I appreciate the update.
You know, and let you know where we're at.
I I look forward to to having that full, like instead of going to get my haircut and and uh, no, no.
You know, I need a barber.
The real. I need.
Me too.
Um, no, but again, I I look forward to that kind of thing.
Maybe I'll go to barber school.
A little bit, a little bit, you know. For for, uh, you know, not for Pete's sake, but a little, a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be really awesome, that spot, especially services and all the people that are there and all the existing ones that are there.
And there's only one dry cleaner there, I think, right now. And and by Caprice, that's where we go.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be a lot more people.
Dry cleaning is a tough business.
Yeah, environmentally too.
And just people dressed like this now, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, so. All right, so.
Appreciate coming in.
No, I I appreciate your feedback and uh, you know, I I will keep Beth posted as we're going and she'll keep you you all posted and uh, we'll go from there.
Excellent.
How many floors are those two front buildings?
Two. So they have uh, four apartments on the top and then the space, space below.
I didn't call the architectural.
So there's only two above the above the bottom.
Yeah, this one, and these are both three. She don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect.
These are three.
Yeah, so I wasn't gonna change anything of the look of the building whatsoever.
There's only one floor.
Yeah.
Okay, but that one looks the same height.
There's one four.
I think it's four.
The one that's built is four.
It's gonna be three, and that's gonna be three and he's two.
Yeah, right.
But then that's.
Yeah.
The roof.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Excellent.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks all. Have a good night. Talk to you later.
I know. Oh, all this, yeah, yeah.
All right, that's it for your plan report. Want to commission comments? Throw that in the.
We do have a barber.
Yeah.
Most straight barbers. You don't need it, all right?
I'm well on my way.
Just a general comment that, you know, we take a lot of heat about building, but you know, you look, every town is getting inundated with this, the same. Situation, right? It it's everywhere and, you know, obviously I think we feel responsible to a degree to keep. Keep it under control as best we can here, but that's everything. It's it's prevalent. It's the way things are going, so. You know, and and even the 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 ritzy towns are are getting, Wilton's getting, Rancho's getting, everybody's, everybody's facing the same uphill battle.
I'll I'll echo that. I was in Michigan a few weeks ago visiting family. Uh, same thing. I mean, farms are getting sold left and right. Uh, developments are going in, apartment buildings are going in. Um. It's just not, it's not a unique Bethel problem. And it's not a area, it's just everywhere. It's everywhere.
Um, Bob had mentioned at one of the public hearings that something about a uh, state doing a study on about six. Is there anything? Do you know anything about what's going on?
No, the only thing that they're doing a study on, as far as I know, is the eighty-four interchange. The infamous eighty-four. No, the eighty-four interchange, our infamous eighty-four interchange, exit A and. You know, they've been studying that and redoing it for years and they have another one in the works now that they're going from there. Down to uh, with uh, exit five. And that's in the very preliminary stage. You gotta understand, I don't want to, I I guess with age you get a little snarky, but um. With the root seven. Uh, interchange that they put in, that was based on, that's, that was thirty years. In order to get the bypass going to New Milford.
The um.
Thirty years to get approved, five years to build.
Yeah, the eighty-four one, if you just go to I eighty-four Danbury dot com, it's all listed.
Yeah, it's all listed there.
We're at the left exits, right?
Our left exits, they want to make a super lane that goes through.
I gave that one to David. David is in charge of that.
A little younger.
I, yeah, I did the eighty-four interchanged New Milford with Chody Ralph. And now, I I'm I'm beyond that. I'm not gonna be here for thirty years.
You guys have anything else?
Good.
Sir Ignard?
Nothing.
I'll overlook to public input.
Nothing?
Nothing.
All right.
Yeah, something, I could say this.
Come on up.
Okay. On Nancy Sudek to Ridgedale Road. It, I appreciate being here and this is like just two of us. So when you guys are having conversations amongst yourselves, a lot of it's cryptic to us. We don't know what you're talking about. So. You refer to something on Plum Trees Road and I'm like, what, what, what on Plum Trees Road? I had no idea what you meant. So I just wanted to make that comment. It would really be nice if when you do say something and there are people sit sitting here, just be a little more, you know, um, give give more details, yeah, whatever. Even just an address would have been like, oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
If I could remember the address.
What were you talking, what were you talking about?
Oh, that's cute. Specifically to that, um, to that application was the one on the corner of Whittlesey there.
Oh, okay.
And they had to take down.
It had to be that.
They had to take down that old farmhouse.
I know all about that.
No, she knows now, but she's saying when we were discussing.
You were discussing it, I thought it was something else.
It took a while to figure out where we where we were going and what we were talking about.
No, I was on your guys' side, man. I tried to correct that on Facebook because people were getting that all wrong.
Yeah.
You know, they were saying, oh, he tore it down because you guys did, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, you did thank me. I know you did.
I did, because.
Anyway, that's all I had to say was just, don't be so cryptic. We don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, it's not intentional.
No, I knew it wasn't. I knew that.
I'll put in the comments. And we have a lot of new people here too. So we do have to kind of, because some people weren't on the board during the.
Correct.
Even though I was there during the public.
Jan Moynton, I'm in there. Um, I'm rereading the master plan a little more carefully this go around. And this week I'm on the part that says that downtown Bethel has an oversupply of parking spaces. So I thought you might file that away. Oversupply. Yeah, that was the word they used.
Where's it? To uh, just to address that, we did, um, and we were just discussing. Uh, more likely the first meeting in September is we're going to have an overview, a discussion on the T O D, and that's been something. Uh, that everyone on the board, or most people on the board, and a lot of public has a lot of concerns about. Um, so that's that's definitely uh, on our radar, just so you guys know. Um, anyone online?
Nico.
Nico.
Hey, gang. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I was just wondering if we have data on the occupancy rates for all the new developments that you were talking about that have been going up. In our town, but also the region. Like, is everything occupied?
Something not that long ago, Beth.
Yeah, I think Beth had something recently on the.
Beginning of the year.
Also the T O D.
On the specifically to the T O D.
The only thing on track in Nico is T O D.
What about the T O D?
That's an internal tracking.
That's the only thing you have.
Yes, that's correct.
So we don't have data on like the actual kind of occupancy rates or do we have data for for the different um? You know, all the the various multifamily, multi-unit uh, residential developments that have gone in?
What I said is I, we we have data on the T O D area. Um, if you're talking about children and things of that nature, that's private. So that is not information that's available to me. Um, I can't call the Board of Ed and said, how many kids live at Eight School Street?
No, just units, just units occupied of whatever.
I I do a report once a year. On the downtown area only. That's the only thing I have a report on. I don't do.
It's a, it's a good question. I mean, the developer here just sent, he just opened up seventy units and there already forty-four is already filled and I think that recently just opened.
Yeah.
So that's pretty good, yeah.
They're, they, just being in the industry and and developer people I know, they, these are filling up very, very, very fast. I don't think there's anything that's unoccupied.
I think when they, when they stop occupying them, they'll stop building them.
Right.
Yeah. And when you talk, you know, when you're talking about data, I look at data, I'm dealing with, I deal with um, families and school children. And the only information that I can call from the Board of Education is um, bus stops. How many kids visit a stop, things like that. And and I think we've gone over those numbers over the years.
We have.
And it's just been very interesting where the children are.
So there's just.
As far as, as far as regional aspects and things of that nature, that's done on a regional planning ag- uh, by the regional planning agency if it is done, which is West Hop. You know, um, the only thing we're capable of doing here in house is to pull building permits and see how many COs have been issued over a twelve month period. But it doesn't tell you four bedrooms, you know, it doesn't get into the details.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering like, yeah, where the, where is the demand? If it is, is the demand for the residential like really that strong? Uh, and not the retail, for example. Um, and are, and is it being, are the buildings that are being built, yeah, are they being occupied? But I guess they wouldn't build them if they weren't getting, selling the apartments, right?
Right.
They would not be building them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right on. Thank you.
Or they would slow down building them if they, you know, if they weren't occupied or they weren't, think that there wasn't a future need for them.
Yeah.
Nico, do you mind saying your address, please?
Yeah, Nico Jordan Wolf Pitts Road, Bethel.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Take it up.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public input?
Can I just, uh, one question was that had been brought up about the density? Was that ever confirmed for the T O D that had a change in name on that or not?
What do you mean?
Back in, in the past, um, you know, it was brought up, I think, I think her letter or something last week brought up. Um.
You mean the twenty versus thirty?
Yeah.
As far as like, I mean, that, I, when I didn't.
Is it written?
I didn't check, I didn't check the regulations, but anybody that's been walking in the door with anything I've said, it's twenty units per eight.
For the T O D.
Yes, and that includes nine and eleven Diamond Avenue. I said, don't walk in here with any. And and, you know, have I checked the, checked it? No, I haven't.
Cause I think we want to just tighten that up, make sure.
Well, we will tighten that up when we start doing all the other, when we, when we put the um, regulations together, but I haven't had anybody question it. That has come in with any development.
We, I thought we made that change.
That's how we made that change.
In thirty years, the twenty.
Jan brought it up and it doesn't, you know, I'll have to, um. I I, we've been busy, I haven't checked it. I haven't checked.
We made that change at the same time we did the building lights.
No.
All right, we're gonna check that. We are gonna verify that, Jan. And even, and if it wasn't done, even though time has passed. Under the statutes, it was your regulation, you can do it in a heartbeat.
Okay.
Okay.
So if that wasn't done, Beth, could you?
I will. I apologize. I.
I went through all the minutes. And I was done, but there was never a vote.
Thank you for making, bringing that to our attention. If it wasn't, can you just have the motion ready for next meeting?
Yeah.
At that time, I don't remember when it was, but I was online and Peter Olson. Talked a lot and then I don't think it ever got back to vote or decide what to do. That's what I thought I remembered happening.
But again, there's no, uh, there's no time period when a commission. Um. Does regulation on their own. There's no time period where it expires on in making a decision and go back anytime and decide, oh, we didn't do this, we could, we can do it. Then without a public hearing, without public input, without anything, you can just make the decision when you want to make the decision.
You guys know what's done.
But we'll check that. And I knew that, and that's why I haven't done anything because no one's challenged. When they've come in on the twenty, no one's challenged that and it's a fix and I apologize. You know, I've been involved in other things.
Yeah. Slightly.
Well, I thank you for bringing that up and we'll get that. If it's not already correct, we'll make it correct.
Amanda, make a note of that for me, would you? Okay.
Anything else? Uh, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to close.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, all favor?
All right.
All right. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Oh, you've got.